Good Lord, we want to thank you for once again allowing us to gather here today. We ask that you please be with us as we go through this agenda. We ask that you please remember the families represented in this room and the citizens of the town court. This is what we ask of them, amen.
Appreciate the crowd too, God. This time we'll have a roll call, lead order and have a roll call.
Last Mayor Fox.
Here.
Councilman Biggs.
Here.
Councilman Van Crease.
Here.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Prophet.
Here.
Now before you the minutes, three minutes, everybody look at them and need a minute or... Any comment, any additions or corrections?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as it read.
They stand approved, read. Police report, county report. The town police, what did July report, should have been before. That's still easy. Any questions for the chief?
Um, that's just going to inquire about housing, the no parking issue, what's that?
We've got new citation books for, uh, no parking sticky spaces. And I still have few, they're still parking down there, but... Take notice. We just got them in the day yet.
Signs are ordered, signs are ordered. County's mercy on that, they haven't, you know, counties want to, so they're ordered, but they are ordered, so...
There are no parking taken, and all of our orders taken, all the others, all we want, like fires and the whole nine yards. They scared of everything.
Ever since last meeting, I've rode up there a couple times, it's little, and they're parking there when there's parking places up there. Fall, so they're just parking there, just so they don't have to walk as far, I guess. It's not like they're out of room up there.
Yeah. Well, it's mainly on like Thursdays and Fridays, they will be out of room up there and they will park on the side, but other than that, they, they...
Like I know this one got left there like all week and right down their side of the register.
Right there, Bell Cino?
Yeah. Just a tractor, it got left there the whole, from Friday till Sunday.
Yeah, well, we're going to address that now since we got stuff to do with it.
Any other questions? Not remove, move on to line out of seven, fire report, anybody here from the fire department? Line item eight, wastewater fan operator, applications for two in both, we have two. Tony's with us tonight and I think he has a preference, and this time I get him slower and he can talk to it.
I'd just like to recommend Bradford Halliburton. He's a young man that is, has a degree in wildlife biology, so he has some understanding of what we do. He's been over the plant, he's a rig industry, and I'm sure he'd like to work the farm. Of course, he'll have to work under a licensed operator for a year before he can take the test and get his license.
Plus, he's already got experience working in a water plant.
He works at a water plant now, yes, and does have some knowledge of what we do.
Neither one of these are certified and lots of time rule of thumb, whoever you do, that if you hire them and you have to send them to school and they have to wait a year before they get their license. And after they get their license, most places have it in that agreement that within three years, if they quit within three years, that they have to pay for what the, the cost to send them to school. If they stay one year, they'd have to pay two thirds, and stay two years, they'd pay a third. Once they finish the three years, then it's over. And I would like it to be in stipulations, which one we hired. We have never hired one, I don't think anybody that wasn't certified. Yes, we did, we hired one police, it did. Sure, but we waited on him, but he paid his own. So I have here tonight, I have, just like I did on the other, I have Bradford Halliburton and Tony Harris. Okay, I'll let you have two cops, so... And I want to do like I did on the last time when we, when we did on, on the building inspector. We just start around, call and you can tell which one, tell which you want.
Last Mayor Fox.
Halliburton.
Councilman Biggs.
Halliburton.
Councilman Van Crease.
Halliburton.
Councilman Hart.
Halliburton.
Councilman Prophet.
Halliburton.
Yeah, he's, he's still got to give them, what, two weeks or how much notice he says they're going to give them?
He was planning on trying to give those folks two weeks, I guess.
We'll start with him. Uh, hold on. Mr. Wakers, good luck. I, I agreed, we made a agreement with him that he starts at fifteen dollars an hour, and I think that's what he's making down there. I told him that if he stayed within a year, you know, when he, we'd give him another dollar, like we did all the police and we'd, we'd all be tired like that. And when he got his license, it would be in the dog. Once you put seventeen dollars, and if it takes him a year, then if we give fifty cents, that'll be seventeen dollars, I had, best you could start. Is that good with everybody?
And the council would have budgeted the position already, it's in the budget somewhere. It's, the pay rate would just have to be within the budget, I'm sure, but like idiots.
Yeah.
But we've already said it to it.
Next line item, financial statements, put your financial statements in front of you. Any comment on financial statements? We want a line item number ten, circle this block to be it.
I just left that in there because we do have the impala left, and we've already went through the process about advertising, so whatever we want to do to get rid of that when we can, either we'll process somebody or call Sam Grages if he wants to judge, however, but if it is the last remaining piece, then we'll be good. Just really done it there for another day.
If I finish, I do just call, you don't, you don't let them come and get it, and probably if you have a hard record, hire all of them, first one thing, best thing to do, just take what we get, because it's basically value, no value right now. Okay, we'll move on to new business, we've got some new business here tonight. I have some complaint forms here and, uh, Tammy Sanders. Tammy Sanders.
My name.
Okay, it says here that the backyard's never been properly fixed from the sewer system going in. The mayor's been told numerous times, and that's bad, that it's, how bad it is, and his fix is just put hay on the ground, and I have no topsoil, only field dirt and rocks. I have lots of pictures to prove this. And down at the bottom, it says, "I have never signed anything saying that the yard was good."
That's true.
Now, what we've done, and I went down there and looked at it, and supposedly they were going to carry some topsoil down there while they were working out here to put on it, and they didn't do a very good job.
My concern is that it's sinking.
Wait a minute, now, I'm, I'm, I've got, I've got this here, and then you talk when I get through, okay? And she's got a legitimate complaint here. We're going to have to fix that, we're going to have to haul some dirt in there, and rule of thumb on SUV or anything, September's first, and I mean, if you put it in August, July, May, you're just wasting your time. And, uh, I didn't put the hay on that, I didn't tell them that they were supposedly to do that. And so I agree with her, and we've got to fix her yard, the backyard, furters, and, uh, Ms. Bennett's mother there, it needs some too. And I've told her that we will, and it, it takes time, I mean, that has been sowed two or three times, and there's no grass there, there's been, basically, I mean, the dirt's not very good, and she needs, she needs some topsoil, and she needs fixed, and and we're going to address that, I mean, it's not over. And as soon as we can get a couple loads of topsoil in there and get some grass on there, and if we have to, we do like we did someone else out there, we put some mat down to hold it. She's got, there's some problem, there's some water coming off the hill up there, it's washing down, and and there's a manhole back there, and the manhole's covered now, I don't know if, if they dumped the dirt on it when they brought it in there, or if it's washed on it and covers it up. But we are going to, that's not a, not a done deal, and I told you that other day. And, uh, and unfortunately, I cannot force grass to grow. If I could, I'd be doing something besides what I'm doing. And we, I'm planning on at least two kind of loads of topsoil to go on that, and then it's, I don't, hold it fixed right, and we've done something in the past like this, and, uh, now...
First of all, this is the first discussion you and I had, actually, the second discussion you and I have had about this. You showed up at the house, we somewhat had this discussion about it as you just kept walking away from it. So, the yard is sinking, and it's sinking bad. And like I said, this has been going on for well over a year. This is really the first time you and I've met face to face to discuss this. So, and I, I would really, really, really appreciate it to be fixed. It's just, it's heartbreaking, and I do have pictures of boulders in my backyard. And the manhole, it was there, they come out there, they uncovered it, where it washed again, all the mud and rock has washed right back over to it. Just every time it rains, it just washes, and my yard sinks more and more and more. I'm just appalled that the engineers said, "That's good." I mean, I really am surprised the engineers let that go, because it's, it's horrible. Anybody, I invite everyone out to my house, pictures does not do it justice, it really doesn't. Because if you look at it, it looks like somebody was trying to put a pool in and just stopped. It's just kind of deep in, just like that, and just left. I used to be able to take a riding lawn mower and go across it, no problem. You was being a riding lawn mower, now you'd kill yourself, you'd fall right off of it. But it is, the more it rains, the more it sinks, and I just, I just want it fixed right, and I've been fighting this for a year. So, that's just my big point, if we can get it fixed, and the hay thing, they were telling me, you did tell them to bring the hay out. So, that's where I got that from, the men that brought it out there.
You've got some wires crossed, ma'am.
Well, I was just saying, the men that brought it out there said the mayor, the mayor informed them to bring the hay and stuff and spread it out.
I informed them that they needed to bring some dirt out there and try to straighten that up and fix it, but evidently...
They brought very little dirt, and what little bit of dirt they had.
I see that, I agree with you, there's no, no problem, and I agree with you, and we, we are going to have, uh, to take care of that.
My question is, is who, is that us, or is that Norris Brothers, who's liable for that? Is, I mean, we evidently closed...
If it's signed off, it'll be on us.
Who signed off?
I never signed off anything. I, my, I'm the owner of the home, my, my name is on the home, I never signed anything.
I rent the house also, I'm the one that signed off on it, because you told me it was okay for me to do that.
And I don't feel like it was, because I was not informed of anything other than, hey, I got home, she said, the mayor's like, "Yeah, yeah, just go on and sign it, go on and sign it, go on and sign it."
My mother was standing right there, we were at my mother's house in her kitchen.
So, the homeowner had no idea, and like I said, this is officially the first time you and I have spoken about this. I've tried and failed.
Maybe it can be fixed, it'll be awesome.
Yeah, like I said, I, I, I personally, I think the engineers ought to be brought back in, because I can't believe they left it like that. I would think it would be more their fault than y'all's fault. That, that's just what I, what I think, I, I think the engineers should be held liable before the town court's voice.
Councilman Fox, to answer your question, I think initially it would fall on us trying to address it. Once we see what it calls to address it, there might be a calls back to back to get that correct.
I appreciate your time.
Any other problems, anybody else been complaining to you about the grass law?
I haven't.
To any of y'all?
We have had some problems with some grass, I mean, that has, you know, which, like I say, there has been some unfortunate events that, we've got a lot of rain during that time, so, you know, I'm not going to say, no, we haven't had the complaints, because I've had some personally.
Me too.
Like I say, I mean, I think everybody's...
I've got four lots down there that I was also told, if you'll sign off in the spring, we'll come back, and if the grass didn't come out, we'll resow it. And the grass never came out, and it never came back, so, I'm just going to fix mine myself. Be done.
Any other comment? I have another one here, she's really upset over the way my driveway got repaired after the sewer came through, it's all breaking off. I would like someone to see what they can be done. Shelby Burton, two seventy-eight, better drive.
That's me.
All righty.
When they cut across the driveway, we was under the impression that whenever they paved the highway, the road up in there, they would fix that, they did patch it. They patched it in two spots. They never did pave it up through there, now it's all coming up and breaking off where they patched it. And I just, you know, I feel...
Was it, Shelby, was it paving or was it concrete?
It was, mine was paving, Becky's was the concrete, but mine's the paving.
I went down there and looked, they had their strip about, oh, three and a half foot, like where they cut, and they put, they put asphalt back in it.
Yeah, they did do that, and then right up from that one strip that goes across, they put a patch up from that, where they would take their trailer and truck down into my yard and park their trailer and stuff there. Which we gave them the permission, but we was under the impression that they was going to fix our driveway back, like it was when they started. And it's definitely not like it was when it started.
So what do you want? What do you want?
Well, I'd just like to have it kind of paved.
You want it taken back out, you want that hood back out and it, and it repaved back?
If, if that's what it takes to get it back, I mean, I've got pictures of it where it's, you know, I don't know if anybody just went down through there and looked at it or not, but, you know, just whatever y'all decide, I would like to have it fixed back, you know, a little better than what it is right now, but...
Okay.
And I appreciate y'all taking the time to listen.
We'll look into it and see what we do.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, any of y'all got anything? New business?
I do, let me have this. Um, we're looking at applying for a grant through Blue Cross Blue Shield to get some new playground equipment at the park. But the only caveat to that is, it has to have their, has to have their name on it, so it'll be Blue Cross Blue Shield, and whatever they stayed under that. You guys are all right with that, we're trying to pursue that, see if we can get something with us.
If we get it.
If we get it.
If we get it.
Yeah, definitely.
You, you apply, you're doing it in person here.
We're UCDD too.
That's the only thing, it has to have that on it?
Yeah, that, whatever we get will have Blue Cross Blue Shield, their name on it, which I don't see any issue with, as long as you guys are...
No, and I think that's a no brainer.
I think they sent us some sample agreements to look at, that something like Healthy Space brought to you by, that was one they had done, or some sort of designation, and um, once they donate it, it becomes ours. Now, some of the contracts provide provision for a maintenance fund to continue to, to keep it up. Um, I don't know if they, these were all just samples and preliminaries, so when we got down to it, I don't know if they were willing to do that, but that did only, if there is a downside to it, once, once they finish it, it could potentially be our baby, so to speak, but same.
Line item in the budget for work, parts.
What about installation, construction, all that, is that all included?
Oh, that's...
We have to accept, under the agreements, we have to accept it, and once we accept it, sir.
We are a very couple of years away from having to replace that. What we've got is extremely, we're close to being updated.
And you're looking at a hundred, eighty, a hundred thousand dollars, so, I mean, that's, that's what, on the new building, I think it's been, where I went, new playground, about eighty something dollars. I mean, you're not talking about a cheap buy.
Sorry, one, okay, let's proceed, right, there's?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got a, Jerry, you want to tell us how much money that we had left out of our, after we got through with Rose Hill?
Yes, sir.
Needless to say, we're not through Rose Hill either, it'll, this year with this grass deal will probably go on for a year. Because unfortunately, we didn't have too much, most of us in backyards, we didn't have much in the front.
And Norris Brothers is aware of that, I mean, they're, they're, the plan right now is for them to be back in September, address the items that have been discussed, go back and look at playgrounds also, and just kind of make sure that that's addressed as well. But to your question, Mayor, for the remaining grant funds that we have, is for right at, I'm going to give you all an even number, four hundred and forty thousand dollars. And we have looked, and according to our estimates, that would be adequate to do the next section there, Long AG Drive, that we talked about previously. As long as the cost estimates hold up and we get good bids on it, so...
I'd like to have a motion tonight, then just start on that out there to finish that, to spend the rest of that four hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Can I ask a question on this, are we in motion first? This is, I don't like calling it free money, but this is bonus money or...
It's grant money, and I mean, theirs is on the, state reviving was up front, we got the first one there, and it was fifty or sixty thousand dollars that come off the front. Uh, rural development, theirs comes off the back. So, we're actually owe a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and what we're going to do here is really money that should have been spent in Rose Hill. So then we getting this year, this is a bonus, we will get this for nothing. And we'll, we'll see, and, and we can bid it, and then if it goes over that, then we come back, see, we still got, we still got another loan up there, hook, six hundred and something thousand dollars supposed to be on this next phase, because we were planning on coming out down through the cemetery and coming out and coming around and bringing it back around and hooking in, maybe up there at Dollar General store. But, uh, uh, that all went by before we couldn't get an easement through the cemetery, so we still going to be able to get the houses that are along on, on the AG Drive. And we, they go with, supposedly, we're going to get some easements that we can go up and get three houses that's on, what is it, Dan Drive, Dan Drive. And his is one of them. Sal Boz is, uh, David Haynes is Bakers and Bill Stafford. And supposedly, we can get three easements to go up sides from yards, there to go up there to pick those houses up. Those houses on the other side there, there's no way possible unless you put a pump in and put it back. And at this stage right now, I mean, but I would like to have a motion for us to proceed.
I'd like to solicit the bid.
Yeah, yeah, to start, to start.
Soliciting, motion to solicit.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Your roll call.
Last Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Councilman Biggs.
Yes.
Councilman Van Crease.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Prophet.
Yes.
And you would still have to approve the bids, you've not permitted spending all that money there.
We're just getting, just...
Rehooking the power going in this next one, yeah, correct.
Try to get two, two shelters on the park, and one with the manholes in it out there, and so that property's out there, somebody can develop it, and at their expense, then they can go to our manhole if they want to build some fish out there. This year, we'll pick up, well, count there too, we'll pick up, uh, Red Nixon, Sam Patel, David Haynes, uh, Ms. Haggins five, Baker six, uh, Brandon Baller seven, Ben's eight, and Bill Stafford be that. Do I count you, Sam?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You know what? So we can basically pick up nine more customers, and I think all those people will hook up, and that will add to our revenue.
And we start to get some people to hook up?
Well, there's some, yeah, yeah.
I've seen some more out on meta drive sections that's hooked up.
Yeah, they, they, they will eventually pick up, and I've got another item, I don't have the figures tonight here, but our, our money has picked up enough that we can possibly, you know, last year, we paid off the old debt that had been there since nineteen ninety. And when we paid that off, the restriction there, that had been extended to two thousand forty-seven, they had stretched that out to try to get the range down. And that's what was happening to us, we didn't pick up any customers, maybe ten or fifteen customers, all we picked up in nearly twenty years. And since we have picked up the others, we have brought some revenue in, even though most of it's twenty-seven dollars, and we paid that debt off last year. And it was at, it was what, four hundred and something thousand dollars, and then we were paying four percent on that. Now, when we paid that off, that money's still, they're still paying, that old, the old set of customers are still paying, and it's adding, adding back up. And I think that we can possibly pay off the first phase that we did in Chester and Lisa and Happy Drive. We can pay it off, but I'll have some figures for you there.
Is there a magic, which I don't want to get off topic, is there a magic number that we need to keep in that sewer fund, just in case? I mean, is that, I've never heard of anything, I was just wondering.
They, they, they want us to keep somewhere in the neighborhood around three fifty, four hundred.
I just never...
We've got eight in it now, there's about what that, that cost up there, what, four something?
Twenty-four.
Yeah, and so, seeing, what you're doing is, as you pay these off, you stop that entry. The first one was four, and now this one here is the one that came with state revolving, and it, it was, uh, it was maybe just a, is it two, Jerry, or just a little on?
I think it's right at two, it's a shade higher.
A shade higher than... A shade higher than, than what we're giving. This money that we have borrowed, a rural development, was the cheapest money that they said they had ever loaned. We got the very cheapest loan that we ever, and we're paying one, three, eight, seven, five. So, every time, though, that we can pay one of those phases off, then we can come back, and that, 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 uh, interest that we're paying, we'll go back in the pot, and then we can start offering those things. And it, it, of course, it's an enterprise fund, it's going to pay for itself, and it will. And if they start hooking up, and the more they fix, fix up, and, uh, I have a lot of people complaining about the thousand dollars, we have to charge a thousand dollars, that's in the contract, that goes toward the loan.
I like they had a comment on that, I was talking to an individual the other day that was inquiring about hooking on, and, uh, this individual wasn't aware that he could spread it out over hundred dollar installments. I think we need to kind of maybe stress that maybe a little bit more. He, he said, I thought I had to pay the thousand upfront, I said, no, sir, you do not, and he said, I, I wasn't aware of that.
I had one, I had to tell them, he said, why can't you pay three thousand dollars? I said, what are you talking about? I mean, it's just.
Y'all didn't know that.
Yeah, that's what they were telling me.
Initially, they were taking hundred dollar installments.
That makes a lot of sense.
That's what I've been doing myself.
And then the property costs somewhere from eight hundred to a thousand dollars to hook on to the town. And then, only thing I wish that I was on it. And I would hook on tomorrow, I'd write a check tomorrow, but, uh, yeah, all right, hit me.
I'll put y'all with something together for the principal and interest figures on that, so you can take a look at it and see where we stand and where we would be if we're down that.
Quiggy Vale also, Giver Diaz, that, uh, move along, any more new business? Not providing anything. New old business?
Traffic light, we're close, it's working. We think, it's a little bit of a malfunction every now and then, but I have talked with the, the guy that put it in, and then over the weekend, mayor's saying it's, it is working a whole lot better.
I, 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 I am suspecting, John, that, and I hope they do, when, when they come in and paint those lines, that what's happening is, a lot of those people are running on up where they're not painted, and they're running past the sensor.
And that's where it's possible.
And then when it flips on, but Lord have mercy, that has helped our traffic down there. Because with that, when it comes on, if there's nothing in the turn lane, it goes green both ways, it turns away.
It's even helped the pilot traffic, the trucks pulling out.
It's helped everything.
Tremendously.
And it was free, the cost was a dime, that's great. They, they replaced their sensor down there. To my dollars, now they.
Yeah, they, they got them working, I don't know who they replaced with others, they got them working.
Everybody, everybody helps.
They get complaints from good.
And just for the record, in case there's an accident, it works, it's just the sensors. We don't have a malfunction. It, it's not giving two greens at the same time.
It does a worse way, John Fox.
Anything else on old business, you got anything, Charlie?
No.
Okay. Austin Turner?
That's me.
Second.
I'll second.